Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can everybody please stand up for the flag? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Canada, and to the indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Is he back?
He is back. He is, he's on mute though.
Computer difficulties, I'm sorry about that, thank you.
We did the pledge, Jerry, so you didn't.
Yep, I heard, I didn't see, but I heard. Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm sorry to say that we're zooming again in this world, but that's, that seems to be like, like to call this meeting to order. Reading of approval of minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
No, we received no agenda emails.
Resolution two-two-zero-zero-zero-five approving current payables.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers three-three-four-zero-eight-two-dash-three-three-four-six-seven-nine-inclusive totaling two million four hundred thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling six million seventy thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, okay, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, resolution two-two-zero-zero-zero-six.
We're in the project consultant for the recreation needs and parks assessment. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the project consultant for recreation needs and parks assessment. And does hereby enter into a professional services agreement with environmental planning and design LLC one hundred Ross Street, Suite five hundred Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, one eight, I'm sorry, one-five-two-one-nine LLC. Be it resolved, the Lackawanna County desires professional services related to Lackawanna County's recreational needs and parks assessment amenity upgrades and additions necessary to respond to the increased park usage and to mitigate the negative effects of COVID nineteen pandemic initially at McDade Park and the Lackawanna County Coal Mine Tour. And be it resolved that Lackawanna County desires environmental planning and design LLC to include best practices practices to assist with recreation needs and parks assessment and requirements following the onset of COVID nineteen with shuttered venue operations grant funds to assist in responding to the ongoing repercussions left by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of County of Lackawanna is hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this agreement. And now therefore be it resolved this fifth day of January two thousand and twenty-two that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized entering into a professional services agreement with environmental planning and design LLC. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairperson, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacko.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This resolution states that the county is entering into a professional service agreement with environmental planning and design to provide consulting services with regard to Lackawanna County's recreation needs and park assessment amenity upgrades. This agreement is the result of an RFP that was issued in July of two thousand and twenty-one. Does anyone have any questions?
The responses that you received from that RFP?
I think there were four.
And this was reviewed and everyone feels it's the best choice?
Yes, we, we had a committee and we all met and we interviewed the, the individuals, companies that had submitted RFPs. And then we did a Rubik and we did rating of the companies and environmental planning and design came on top.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two-two-zero-zero-zero-seven.
Commissioners, just for the record, Ms. Sacko will be here for the next seven resolutions. Entering into a cooperation agreement with Borough of Elephant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Elephant for the Elephant Borough Building ADA Accessibility Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Elephant, Elephant Borough Building ADA Accessibility Project Two. Number one, general construction, the Sean Byrne Construction, three-four-nine rear north Main Street, Dixon City, Pennsylvania. The lowest and most responsible qualified bidder, one hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, Ms. Sacko.
These are standard required agreements for our CDBG program. And this resolution states that the county is entering into the cooperation agreement with the Borough of Elephant and a contractor agreement with Sean Byrne Construction, who was the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Elephant Borough ADA Accessibility Project in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand one thirty-six. Any questions?
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution two-two-zero-zero-zero-eight.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of German. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of German. Be it further resolved, Board of Commissioners, the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the German Borough ADA Elevator Construction Project Two. One, because of general construction, Scandell Associated Builders, one hundred Calvary Road, Dixon City, Pennsylvania, one eight-five-one-nine. The lowest and most responsible and qualified bidder for two hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, once again, Ms. Sacko.
Again, these are standard required agreements for our CDBG program. The resolution states that the county is entering into the cooperation agreement with the Borough of German and the contractor agreement with Scandell Associated Builders Construction, who again was the lowest, most responsible bidder for the ADA Elevator Construction Project in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand two sixty-six. Any questions?
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Thank you.
Sorry, he made a motion, I'll second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-zero-zero-nine.
Ratifying the submission of a RACP grant application for the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank. Whereas the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank entails the purchase, construction, renovations, and related costs of an existing property for their headquarters in Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. Whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP funds, as a source to finance the project. And whereas the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank has proposed that the county assist Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas the county desires to assist Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an application and award in the amount of two million dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant on behalf of the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank for Phase Two of their project. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, once again, Ms. Sacko.
This resolution is ratifying the filing and acceptance of a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank in the amount of two million dollars for the bank headquarters project. The project entails planning for and potentially constructing a modern office building on acquired land and/or renovating a vintage building to be owned by the bank in order to locate their headquarters and showcase their growing digital capabilities in Lackawanna County. In addition, the proposed project would create a more attractive environment for highly desired talent to support business objectives, increase, increase capacity to accommodate planned growth and technology and improve efficiency in their service and operations. Any questions?
I'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-zero.
Ratifying the submission of a RACP grant application for the Fellowship House. Whereas the Fellowship House project entails the purchase, construction, renovations, and related cost of an existing property to provide recovery services in Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas the Fellowship House has proposed that the county assist the Fellowship House in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas the county desires to assist the Fellowship House in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an application and award in the amount of one million dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant on behalf of the Fellowship House, for the Fellowship House project. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, once again, Ms. Sacko.
Again, this resolution is ratifying the filing and acceptance of the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Fellowship House in the amount of one million dollars for a project which entails the purchase, construction, renovations, and related cost of an existing property to provide recovery services within Lackawanna County. Any questions?
No questions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-one.
Ratifying the submission of a RACP grant application on behalf of Abington Redevelopment. Whereas Abington Redevelopment aims to repurpose existing real estate for medical and neighborhood commercial venues and also expand small business enterprise and small business employment growth with the construction of approximately thirty-five thousand additional square feet of commercial space in Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. And whereas the Lackawanna County, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas Crown South Abington Holdings LLC has proposed that the county assist Abington Redevelopment in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas the county desires to assist Abington Redevelopment in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an application to and award in the amount of three million dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant on behalf of Crown South Abington Holdings LLC for the Abington Redevelopment Project. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, once again, here is Ms. Sacko.
Again, this resolution is ratifying the filing and acceptance of the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of Abington Redevelopment in the amount of three million dollars. This project aims to repurpose existing real estate in South Abington and Clark's Semen area for medical and commercial venues. Any questions?
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-two.
Designation of agent to Lackawanna County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA requires the Hazard Mitigation Plan for counties to be periodically updated. And whereas the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency PIMA has approved funding for Lackawanna County to update the two thousand and twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan for the county. And whereas the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency requires the designation of an agent by the county to authorize, execute, fore, and act on behalf of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved, Lackawanna County is hereby designate the Director of the Department of Planning and Economic Development as the agent to authorize, execute, fore, and act on behalf of the Commissioners for the application to a forthcoming contract between Lackawanna County and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the two thousand and twenty-five Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Adopted, adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, once again, here is Ms. Sacko.
This resolution is required to allow the county to apply to FEMA for funding for the two thousand and twenty-five Hazard Mitigation Plan update. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is federally mandated to be updated every five years. If it is not complete and adopted, all municipalities will not have the potential to be funded if there is a presidential declaration of an emergency. Our latest Hazard Mitigation Plan was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one. Questions?
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
A second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-three.
Amending the Recovery Loan Program. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and amend resolution two-zero-dash-zero-one-two-six. Whereas on June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County approved the Lackawanna County Recovery Loan Program to be administered by Metro Action, a nonprofit affiliate of the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce with a contribution of two hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Community and Economic Development. The Recovery Loan Program was created to assist, establish Lackawanna County businesses who were negatively impacted by COVID nineteen. Whereas this amendment will adjust the guidelines of the loan program to be in line with the current needs of the Lackawanna County businesses who were negatively impacted by COVID nineteen. The amended Lackawanna County COVID Relief Loan Program will provide working capital to be used by the business for operations. Eligible uses include, but are not limited to lease and mortgage payments, utility payments, payroll, and other operational expenses. To include purchase of machinery, equipment, or technology that will allow the business to expand its operations. Loan amounts will be available for qualified and approved applicants up to twenty-five thousand dollars with a maximum thirty-six month term on a first come, first served basis until funding is exhausted. Whereas the administration and contribution will remain in effect as previously approved by Resolution two-zero-dash-zero-one-two-six and be adopted and incorporated as if fully set forth herein. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, finally, here is Ms. Sacko.
This resolution again is amending the resolution twenty-dash-zero-one-two-six approving a two hundred thousand dollar contribution to the Lackawanna County Recovery Loan Program that will be administered on our behalf by Metro Action, an affiliate of the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce. The June twenty-twenty loan program allowed for loans up to ten thousand dollars. But the amended Recovery Loan Program will assist small businesses in Lackawanna County that again have been negatively impacted by COVID nineteen by providing a loan up to twenty-five thousand dollars for operational expenses. Any questions?
No one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're busy, Brenda.
I'm a little busy, hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Hi.
Resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-four.
Entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the United States Marshal's Service. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the United States Department of Justice, United States Marshal's Service for a new negotiating per diem rate of one hundred and two dollars for the Lackawanna County Prison to house federal detainees. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Warden of the Lackawanna County Prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, how are you today?
Good.
Real briefly, the intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Marshal Services, what it does is it, it allows us to go up to charging a hundred and two dollars per day per U.S. Marshal detainee for a three-year time period. And at that point, we could either attempt a renewed contract three years from now, or we can just have things continue at what they are. The nice thing is that is the hundred and two dollars per diem is a fifteen dollar increase over what is currently being charged. It would, if our current U.S. Marshal detainee population remained as what it is today, a hundred and sixty-nine, that would be a monetary increase in revenue of over nine hundred thousand dollars for the year two thousand and twenty-two. The rest of it is rather routine and normal, what we've always had with the rest of the contract is what we've always had with the U.S. Marshal Service. But I'm open to any questions anyone may have.
Any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-five.
Entering into an agreement with Cornerstone Detention Products. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a service agreement with Cornerstone Detention Products Incorporated on behalf of the Lackawanna County Prison. Agreement to commence immediately and expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two for maintenance, repair, and/or evaluation of new or existing security equipment. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Warden Betty.
Regarding this contract, the service agreement with Cornerstone, just in case it rings any bells with anyone, Cornerstone is the new name of the old company Comtech. We've dealt with Comtech since the, since the prison was renovated and rebuilt in nineteen ninety-eight. They are the software management company for all of our doors and how our doors tie in with our cameras. Extremely important software. It's a, it's an annual fee, I believe this year, a little over twelve thousand dollars. That's right in the ballpark of what it's always been. I believe that they've always incorporated three or four percent increases annually. But it's, it's well worth it because of the benefit we reap from it, from that software package. And frankly, they're the only game in town.
Any questions for Warden Betty?
Nope.
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Warden.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
Thank you.
Resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-six.
Entering into a second amendment to a lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a second amendment to a lease agreement with Bertram Realty Corporation to Maxim, Maxum Drive, Old Forge to lease the property at one Maxim Drive, Old Forge for the use of the District Magistrate Office. Term of amended lease extended until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the First Assistant Solicitor, Mr. Don Fredericks.
Thank you, Commissioners, before, for your consideration, today is an extension on the magistrate's lease on the Old Forge area. It's a five-year renewal. For the first three years, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, the monthly rent will be twenty-four hundred dollars a month. And then that will increase to twenty-five hundred for the last two years, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. We've had a magistrate's office there since two thousand and eleven, and it's a magistrate's siege's office, Arnold Forge.
Okay.
Any questions for Don?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion. Okay, second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion, or resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-seven.
Entering into a Homeland Security Grant Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Emergency Management and the Northeast Pennsylvania Regional Counterterrorism Task Force for the United States Homeland Security Grant in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen thousand twenty-two dollars to commence on September first, two thousand and twenty-one, and expire on August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Emergency Management Agency Director, Mr. Tom Taylor.
Morning, everyone. This is the Homeland Security Grant Program. This grant program supports the ten county, Pennsylvania Northeast Counterterrorism Task Force. The grant supports the training equipment, maintenance on the equipment, planning, the exercises that are conducted throughout the years. The task force equipment is shared between all ten counties. It's available to all ten counties. It also supports the SWAT Bomb Squad and the USAR team that is housed out of the city of Scranton for their equipment as well. Any questions?
No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-eight.
Proven District Attorney's Memorandum of Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Memorandum of Agreement Renewal Option Number One between the District Attorney's Office and the Scranton Housing Authority for the services of an Assistant District Attorney for the year two thousand and twenty-two. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our District Attorney of Lackawanna County, Mr. Mark Powell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All, Happy New Year. I'm requesting the approval of a one-year extension with the Scranton Housing Authority. This is a longstanding grant designed to provide safe and a drug-free environment for our Scranton Housing Authority. It's a grant we apply for every couple of years, but the last time we applied, there's essentially an automatic one-year extension which we're requesting that the county enter into, and we will reapply for the grant when due.
Anyone have any other questions for Mr. Powell?
I don't.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, resolution two-two-zero-zero-one-nine.
Providing provider contracts for the Office of Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities, and Early Intervention Programs. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the provider contracts between the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna County, Lackawanna, Susquehanna Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program and their providers for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-two. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairperson, here to speak upon that is the Behavior of Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program Director and Administrator, Ms. Mary Ann Colbert.
And Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For your consideration this morning are two early intervention contracts for two prospective providers. One for Elizabeth Tibecash, who will provide physical therapy services to infants and toddlers birth to age three. And Compass Health Systems, who is requesting to provide special needs instruction, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy. Also for infants and toddlers birth to age three. These are two willing and qualified providers and both have agreed to accept the rates established by the Office of Child Development and Early Learning to deliver these services for infants and toddlers in Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties. Do you have any questions that I can respond to?
If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, resolution two-two-zero-zero-two-zero.
Ratifying with Steamtown LLC. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify and enter into a lease agreement with Steamtown three hundred LLC, one with Steamtown Three Hundred LLC, One Keystone Place Chesa, for the movie house facility located at three oh one Lackawanna Avenue, Scranton, for the purpose of a COVID testing for the general public. Term to commence January first, two thousand and twenty-two, and expire January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, with the possibility of an extension and to cost nine thousand dollars a month. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, I'll speak upon that. As you are know, as you all know, that we have opened up a free rapid testing clinic right next door to us here in the government building at the, this former Steamtown Movie Theater on the first floor, we're occupying it. I can give you more details about it as we move on to the next resolution and how we're faring over there. But this will be paid out of COVID money.
It's going really well at this point, right?
It is. It is. I can give the details of it right now.
No, you can wait. We'll get this one over with. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution two-two zero zero two one.
Mr. Chairman, ratifying an agreement for the interim healthcare services. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify and enter into a professional services agreement on behalf of the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services and the area on aging with the interim healthcare services incorporated for healthcare staffing. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the contract of the individuals who are actually doing the testing next door. It pays for the nurses that are doing the testing and the clerical staff that is taking down the details of the, of the individuals who are coming through and filling out the forms, as well as providing unfortunately positive results, and then also providing forms that are negative results. So this is also going to be paid out of COVID-nineteen money.
And the people are segregated, the ones that are asymptomatic and the ones that do have symptoms when they go to the testing areas, correct?
That is correct. Right now, what we did over the holiday weekend, the new year weekend, was we opened up a site, several sites actually, where people can go in and were able to click on and get themselves an appointment to come in. That filled up within the first twenty-four hours for all of this week. The individuals over there were able to ascertain and guess ninety-six appointments per day from ten AM to six PM. But they were also providing for walk-in. When there was a walk-in, they were doing the triage with them right then and there. The only individuals we are bringing in are allowing in for these rapid tests, which are available. The results are available in fifteen minutes. Are those who have been exposed, or are those who are showing symptoms? And those two categories are placed in two different theaters, as it were, over in the movie theater area. And they're separated with social distancing in the chairs and all that kind of stuff. So on the first day, we had the ninety-six show up, and we also had an additional fifty-some show. We did a little bit over a hundred and forty-eight tests on the first day. Yesterday, we went over four hundred. We see us continuing to do that for the rest of this week. We have ordered more tests, and we're hoping that we'll get those in Friday or Monday. We should have enough tests right now to take us into Monday. But by the end of today, really is when we're going to know where we are as far as how many tests we have left. We have ordered them. They were on their way, and a storm hit in Baltimore. So that's the last we heard where they were was in Baltimore, Maryland.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Mr. Jeffers? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
The question? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Jeffers. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Hi.
I'm Ms. Smart.
So we received one email today at theopenmeetings@lackawannacounty.org. But I responded to the email address and let them know that based on the legal advertisement that comments and questions in writing must include their name and address in order to be answered and included in the minutes. And it must be received by nine AM on the day of the meeting. So I asked for them to respond and include those, and the email will be read at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioners, that is just following our normal standard operating procedure. Even if somebody comes live to a meeting, we always request their name and address, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, other business. Mr. Sherlock.
Let's just say happy new year to everyone, and hopefully we will, after this little short Zoom session, we'll be back on track here, but let's hope for the best.
Agree with you, okay. Commissioner Donak.
I have nothing.
Okay, all right. I would like to thank everyone, and unfortunately, we are Zoom again, and we will be at our next meeting. And after that, hopefully, we'll be live. Thank everyone for their patience and understanding, and please get vaccinated. Thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Question? And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.